I'd like to call our presentation portion of the county commission meeting to order. And it's a real honor for me to call on our commissioner to a resolution honoring Charles Beach.
I'm in the wrong way.
This is a resolution honoring Sergeant Charles Douglas Beach. Whereas Sergeant Charles Douglas Beach has served the Anderson County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of this great county since March 1st, 1982. And whereas on July the 12th, 2019, he announced his retirement from the sheriff's office with over 37 years of distinguished service under seven different sheriffs. And whereas during his career Sergeant Beach has supervised numerous department, departmental units and several, received several honors and letters of commendation along the way. And whereas Sergeant Beach has also served his country as a member of the United States Army 278th Armored Cavalry Regiment, participating in an overseas deployment in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. And whereas all through his final shift has, although his final shift has ended and he has hung up his duty belt for the last time Sergeant Beach's legacy will always be remembered in the hearts of his fellow coworkers and many citizens positively encouraged and influenced during his career. Now therefore be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commission meeting this 16th day of September 2019 that we honor, congratulate, and express our sincerest gratitude to Sergeant Charles Beach for his 37 years of dedicated service to the Anderson County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of our great county. Furthermore, in honor of his service Anderson County, to Anderson County, we authorize the transfer of his assigned duty weapon and badge pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 88218 and Anderson County Resolution 1808702. Be it further resolved that we hereby proclaim September the 20th, 2019 as Sergeant Charles Douglas Beach Day in honor of his service to Anderson County and our great nation. Resolved duly passed and affected this 16th day of September 2019. Additionally, the sheriff's office has a plaque for you Chuckie commemorating your service with us. So Chuck, I apologize Chuckie's how we know him, right? When Denver read his Christian name there, I looked around because I thought we were here for Chuckie. I'm gonna tell you Chuckie has been phenomenal and is honestly, I can tell you guys this, a hoot, tons of fun, always just a trooper and always moving forward for the sheriff's office and really whatever he does. And I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna miss you big time, we really are. He kept it fun, I promise you that.
Chuckie say a few words to us.
Well, let me tell you, that's one roller coaster ride I'm glad to get off of. After 37 years, I just had to move on. I'd like to thank my wife, she stepped aside being a law enforcement officer's wife and then being a military wife, it was a double load on her. So I appreciate that. Appreciate the family and friends that come by. And it was an honor to work at sheriff's office and serve the citizens and serve my country. So thank you.
Okay, next we have a public hearing, an amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution to include the rezoning of property at the intersection of Mountain Road and Norris Freeway. And I'll open up the meeting for public comments on that proposed rezoning. Danny, is there any comments you'd like to make from the planning commission or from...
I think it would be best for Mr. Kirby to address this first where he can articulate exactly what the...
And is Mr. Kirby the property owner?
No, he is, I think real estate. Yeah, I'm Danny Kirby, First Commercial Real Estate, I represent the property owners. If y'all are familiar with the property, I'll try to give you some direction. Corner of Mountain Road, Norris Freeway, Cross Pike, there's about 70 acres there, part of it fronts on Norris Freeway, part of it fronts on both sides of Mountain Road and then heads back to the north along Cross Pike. This property's all zoned I-2 right now. The property owners have put it on the market to sell the property as one whole tract. When we put our signs out there, we kept getting continuous calls with, from people that wanted to cut out two or three or four or five acres of it. And so we said, you know, I think we might be better served if we cut this up into some mini farm style tracts. We settled on about five acre tracts. And what we're trying to do, we have a couple of folks who have written offers, but they're contingent upon getting the property rezoned to I-2. We thought that was the most fitting zoning. Everything around in all directions except going back towards Norris Freeway is all zoned A-2. So we thought that was a fitting zoning to have there. Where we're at right now is trying to actually, I think at Planning Commission, it was discussed that there needed to be a definite line from one point to another to separate that boundary of the A-2 from the I-2 property. We've since created kind of a preliminary type plat showing those five acre tracts. So we have that now, we have the information that would be able to designate that line. We've got a little bit of adjustment to do there. If y'all are familiar with Mountain Road, there's an existing old house there and one of the proposed buyers is looking to buy that particular piece of land and they would like to keep that driveway intact where it comes off the road. And so we're having to adjust that boundary a little bit. And you can see if you're holding, and if anybody needs a copy of this, I've got some extras fairly large there. This is Mountain Road coming from Norris Freeway. Norris Freeway is here at the bottom. We're gonna keep this as I-2 for any type of commercial development there. Mountain Road, again bisects the property, there's a portion of it on the, well, this is actually the south side and this is the north side. But right now, we're trying to separate that. There's a little jog in the property line right here. We'd like to try to stay right in line with that coming across, catch that driveway down at this point, and then continue on over to a point over here on this side. So eventually we'll be able to create, we think, eight five plus acre tracts over there. So we've had kind of all this perk, but one of the contingencies being the zoning as far as moving forward with any type of contracts or anything.
So the commercial I-2 is gonna remain I-2?
Correct.
That's your proposal?
Right.
And residential prime property is you're proposing to have it rezoned to A-2?
Correct.
And Mr. Phillips, can I ask you to explain what is permissible in A-2 and also in I-2? Is that, can you do that for us?
Well, I mean, you start contracts between the two zones, but the, what is being proposed here, all of the properties that are around it are A-2. What's being proposed? The only thing that I don't know how it can be doable is in a public hearing to vote something up on something that's just proposed. I mean, there's no official lines created that's plotted out yet.
Right.
Or map and parcels for these lots. So the recommendation of the planning commission, and of course, it's had that recommendation, it's had, it's been posted for public notice. Their recommendation was, yeah, we can put it through the rezoning process, save it for commission, but the rezoning can't become official until there is an official plat map created where these lots are plotted out.
Right.
And so that's kind of how it's coming, you know, from the planning commission. And of course, I told Mr. Kirby this as well, you know, that I felt like that's kind of how everything would go down, that a map is gonna have to be created, it's gonna have to be recorded. If they're all over five acres considering they all have roadfront, you just don't have to go for a planning commission. Probably wise considering the situation that it is, it's a unique situation. But you know, it does have a recommendation, but I think it's all contingent on a map being created as to how these parcels are gonna end up being.
So if I may reiterate a little bit about where we are here, we're using the public hearing as a way of notifying the county commission and the public what proposals are for this property.
I would think at this point, probably so. And I think the next step for these guys would be actually getting the official map created or, you know, what they're gonna end up with. I think the whole deal was, they didn't want to put the money into the surveying and having all of this done and then bring it before county commission, it being no go. I think they wanted some assurance that this is doable before they put that kind of money into it, so.
So as the way I look at it, we're not obligated for a rezoning vote by this county commission?
I mean, I think at this point, no. I would, I would say no.
Commissioners, go.
Thank you. So for the people at home, what is an A-2 and what is an I-2?
Okay, so A-2 is rural residential district, low density. I-2 is your light industrial. And so, you know, this property is straight across the road from Clayton Homes and other manufacturing places that are I-2, been I-2 for a long time. And those I-2 properties are primarily surrounded by A-2. Across the road, you have Brookstone Subdivision, which is an R-1S. So you got a diversity of zoning there, but what they're proposing is the majority of the, you know, the zoning there, A-2.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And what I was wanting you to say, if I recall correctly, I-2 allows such industries as medical facilities, waste facilities, landfills, is that correct?
You know, I'm afraid to say yea or nay on that for sure without looking at the description again, because when you get I-1, I-2, all of that's kind of hard to keep, you know, all of that. But again, what we do know is manufacturing, factories, stuff like that is permissible in this zone. And I'm certain that's one of the reasons they want to keep the front portion of this property as I-2 for that, that potential.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've talked to a few of the neighbors in the area about it and the feedback I'm getting, they're, they're okay with what's going, proposed going back to A-2. Their preference would be for the whole thing to go back to A-2 because they really don't want to see what you mentioned developed along the freeway there, along that scenic highway.
Medical waste facility, for instance.
Yeah. The only question I would have is, I know A-2 permits certain things, but would the, are the property owners, are you planning on restricting the deeds at all to like a minimum square footage, mobile home, yea or nay, that sort of thing?
Yeah, we are. We've actually developed a set of draft restrictions. Everybody that's come along wants those, if they're inquiring about a tract of land, they want to know what's gonna be permissible. We've told them, you know, there will be no further subdivision of the properties. We're gonna try to have, you know, 50 foot set, front setbacks so they're not sitting right up on the road. Side setbacks so that they're not sitting right next to each other. A lot of this is driven by, there's not sanitary sewer out there, so a lot of this is driven by perk tests. So we've done that portion of it to determine where the drain field and field lines could be to lay these out. So yeah, we do have a set of guidelines and restrictions that'll be put in place so that, you know, you can't have junk cars sitting there, you can't have inoperable RVs and boats and some of those things. If you build an outbuilding, it needs to match. And we have a design review committee that's set up that is, will be the owner of the colonel of the property and a couple other members, and they submit their plans to us and we approve them. And then going forward, the buyers of those lots then become part of that review committee. So they, yes, there will be deed restrictions on the property.
Any other comments from commissioners? Questions? Oh, Mr. May.
Of course, we're not approving this tonight anyhow, but my understanding is that where the red line is across the, kind of the center there, the bottom of the rezoning area, that little section of I-2, you change, the, the change we're gonna be seeing when it comes is gonna be that the, the A-2 will be everything above the red line, including that little section because of this driveway issue?
Yeah, that's correct. We originally did this, was, this was done for our, our sign that we put out there. We didn't pick up on the fact that that driveway was below that line. So yes, when we turned in the application for the rezoning, we put a little jog in that line to try to pick up that, pick up that driveway there. And then we tried to straighten out as soon as we could to get back in line with what we were doing over here on this side.
So we could end up with eight really nice homes being built here in the county.
Any more comments from the audience? Mr. McCamey, Commissioner McCamey.
Danny and Mr. Kirby will vote tonight to approve subject to planning commission. Is sufficient for you all to invest in, I mean, I...
Yeah, I think right now what we're looking for is kind of that, we realize that what we really need to do, and we've done it on the portion of the property, I guess, that would be north of Mountain Road and east of Cross Pike, that particular tract of land, we've gone in and we've created the legal descriptions for those five acre tracts. So we've, we've narrowed down the actual delineation of that, the bearing and distance for that particular portion of the line. We've got to make a slight adjustment down here on the driveway and then we'll pick up and do the other side. We've, we've perk tested all this and we're in the process of perk testing this. But to answer your question, yeah, that would really kind of give us a little bit of a vote of confidence to keep moving forward because like I said, we do have a couple of folks who are wanting to write contracts legally under state law. We can't enter into a contract for something that doesn't exist or that we can't create. So yeah, that would certainly help us if we can get that. If you can make it subject to us providing a true boundary line that would delineate between those two zones, that'd be fantastic.
Danny, would, would that, would that satisfy you and the planning commission, a vote of that? I mean, I defer to the two commissioners that represent that district, but I understand what you're saying, they want some, some type of assurance that should they invest several thousand dollars in doing this, that it's gonna be approved. And I'm willing to, you know, whatever the commission from that district, if they're in favor of it, then I, you know, there's nobody here from the public that I know of, and it's been advertised, right?
Yes, sir.
So there's nobody here in opposition to it, is there?
I actually, I actually live on Cross Pike Road, so for me personally, I would just, I would like the assurance to make sure that those restrictions are in place where there's not a couple of five acre tracts that's balked and it is made a trailer park or anything like that. The road, Cross Pike Road, doesn't even have lines on it. It's such a small road and, and it really can't take much more traffic than it already is. So I'm okay with it, but I would just like to make sure we have something in place.
Sure. I'd be happy to share the draft.
Before we improve anything. And like I said, I think it's a great plan. I would be for it as long as, as long as there's some steps in place to, to keep it from being...
Yeah, we didn't want somebody trying to buy five acres and carve out, I mean, even to the extent where it's a little bit of a challenge nowadays when, you know, you do have family members who you have to take care of and could you carve out a, you know, we started just having to draw the line to say no further subdivision, one single family, you know, detached dwelling on each tract and you can have an outbuilding of some kind. Again, a lot of that's gonna be dictated by the soils there. Most of these five acre tracts probably have just enough area, suitable soils for a three or four bedroom house, is about it. So, but happy to share those restrictions. We've got them drafted, we haven't recorded them, they were sort of pending. We're bouncing them around off of folks to kind of make sure, you know, there's a fine line between being too restrictive. And we don't want to get into building materials and things like that. It's, it's really about just trying to protect people from taking a, a home, a five acre home, tract, and turn it into some type of commercial lot or, you know, adding two or three mobile homes and that kind of thing. So we think we've got that nailed down.
I'd like to recognize Commissioner Denenberg next.
I know that as far as this body is concerned, that it's a very preliminary situation, but I for one would like to take a look at what it is that you are planning and what you intend to do with the property before, you know, we do anything permanently. And like Commissioner McCamey said, you know, whatever we did tonight would be subject to just about anything else that would go through planning commission and that sort of thing. But having been around this business for a few years myself, I would really like to look over whatever it is that you're looking to do.
Well, again, all we're trying to do is from the landowner standpoint is basically subdivide the property.
Right.
And have it zoned properly so that, again, the A-2 zone, I'm looking at uses permitted in A-2 district, farming and ag uses, detached single family and two family dwellings, which we would not allow the two family dwelling. So I mean, some zoning dictates that, that the other things are restricted in the covenant, in the declaration of restrictions that we would record on the property. We don't intend to build homes, so I don't have anything to show you in terms of this is the style of home we plan to build.
No, I'm talking about the restrictions that you're looking to...
Oh, sure. I'd be glad to share those with you.
That's what I would like to take a look at.
Sure.
And I'm sure the rest of the committee would as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, I defer to the legal issues to the law director, but I would think that as much as we could do tonight would be to say it's the sense of the commission that subject to the restrictions be legally established and available?
I wouldn't take any vote on it tonight. We're glad to have you here in Anderson County, but it's here, you're not allowed. You have no idea where these lot lines are gonna be, you got it drawn on a piece of paper, you have no map and parcel even identified on it. But we want to see you here, believe me, but we want to do it right. And the best thing to do is to go ahead and carve out these lots, get it surveyed, to record it, get the map and parcel, put your covenants and restrictions in place, bring it back like everybody else, so the commission can take a look at it at that point, they can take action. Any action tonight is premature. You have no idea what, where these lines are gonna be, what he wants to have is I-2, that's heavy industrial.
No, no, it's already I-2.
Well, I know, but we don't, we don't know how far you're gonna extend that and you don't know how far you're gonna come back with the A-2. We have no idea right now. But right now, I wouldn't commit to anything other than we're glad to have you, we want to work with you, we commit, I'll be glad to help you, Danny will, and we'll get this through, but right now, it's just not right for a vote. We have to subdivide and we have to assign zoning by map and parcel. You don't even have a map and parcel.
Okay. Again, I understand that. I went to planning commission requesting exactly what to do.
The way I understand it, you asked, is it doable? This was a concept plan and we're, we're glad to have that. We'd love to see building in this county. But it, as it stands right now, it's just not right. You've not gone through the hoops like everybody else that comes in here.
Well, just to speak from this particular case, under the state rules, you don't necessarily create a preliminary plat or a plat if it's over five acres. And everything that we have drawn with meets and bounds descriptions, we're planning to do over five acres. If somebody comes along and says we need, we'd like six acres or seven acres, if I come in and create a preliminary plat and I go record that, then I'm coming back every time to re-subdivide if somebody needs to split one of those tracts. The goal was to try to get to, create the dividing line between the I-2 and the A-2 and then carve out the five acre tracts as we go. As people say, well, I like this five acre track, but I'd like to have six acres, can I move this lot line over? If I put them all down on paper now and get them recorded, I'm just running back and changing them.
That's our, our exact position. We have no idea where those lot lines are gonna be at this point, other than what you've got on preliminary site plan.
I understand. I'm, I guess, I guess, because you wouldn't see it if I were going to six acre tracts, the planning commission doesn't see that anyway.
We're gonna see it when you subdivide. You're asking for, look, you're asking for rezoning, don't get it confused with subdividing, okay? You're, you're part of a subdividing, that's part of this equation, but you're asking for rezoning, which is an amendment to the zoning resolution.
I understand, but if, as the existing I-2 zone, if we went and carved out a five acre track back there and sold it off on Cross Pike to somebody for industrial use, that can be done now?
I can tell you right now, this body would have an issue if you put industrial on Cross Pike. That is a residential zone and that is the exact situation that we're, we need to prevent here.
I understand, which is what I tried to propose.
That industrial, that industrial zone was designed for the David Jones Industrial Park right there. It wasn't designed to come in off Cross Pike Road where I don't think there's anything close to commercial there. I mean, to industrial, we've got a tire shop up at the intersection, but those are homes back in there.
There's one other, there's one other piece of property there that's, that's commercial, but the rest of it is all...
I don't think any of it's even close to I-2.
No.
But we're, again, we're glad to have you here, we'll work with you, we'll, we'll help you any way we possibly can, but we're just not here yet on this project.
Okay, so then I guess I need some direction because again, I'm not carving it up into five acre tracts again and creating a plat and going through that process. All I want to do is try to create that dividing line.
Yeah, to create your dividing line.
To so we can separate the I-2 from the A-2 zone, we can create that line. Everything above it is five acre.
That's a start. That's a great start.
You have a legal definition for that.
That's what I'm trying to create.
Yeah, that's her.
So is there a timing, so like if I get that put together in the next, before the next county commission meeting, can we go?
It needs to go to the planning commission. You don't have final approval from planning commission, to my knowledge. You got a concept approval.
A concept for subdivision.
Did you get a final approval from planning commission on this without map and parcel number assigned?
No, no, they have...
Okay, it still needs to go to the planning commission then.
They have a recommendation that the, it can be rezoned. What we said is that there's a recommendation that it can be rezoned if a plat map is created with the way that the lots are gonna end up. I mean, it's basically what y'all are requiring. But again, they're just wanting assurance that these properties can be rezoned before they sink the money into, you know, I guess, the official surveying and all of that.
The zoning resolution takes care of that, yes, they can, but as long as they do go through the proper process like everyone else that comes before this body.
But a subdivision of greater than five acres doesn't go to the planning commission unless it requires infrastructure, correct?
You're, listen to me, you're amending the zoning resolution.
I understand that.
That does go to the planning commission.
Which, we went to the planning commission, that's where his recommendation is.
Let me get control here again. We got discussion between the, the two of you. Let's address the chairman and I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sat on the planning commission and they brought that as a concept only. And the planning commission actually looked at that and talked about several different things they would have to do, such as a buffer zone and all that, but it was all just in concept only.
That's very good, very good.
And that's how we handled that, for them to go, you know, in, that's basically what they said, or the planning commission said, if, if you do all this, then we won't have a problem with it, but then I'll have to go to full commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And if I may comment, Danny, I know this is a little hard on you, but the number of years I've served, I've never had the planning commission to bring a proposal such as this to us.
Yeah.
But that's not negative towards you, but...
I understand.
But I think the point that the law director made is the rules are for everyone.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
I don't think anyone, we weren't.
I don't think anyone, we weren't asking to skirt any rules whatsoever. We were just trying to figure out what's the process because again, if I go draw this line here, because I'm going to give you a, for example, let's say we create this line that's going to be this zoning line and we go and we take it to Planning Commission just to create that line, it gets approved and we subdivide the property, then I were to go to county commission and for whatever reason, something changes and they turn down the rezoning. Now I've got two separate pieces of property there, still zoned I2, nothing changed and we're, we're kind of out that whole process of creating that line. But I'm just, I'm trying to explain why we went down the path that we went down versus trying to actually subdivide the property on the front end and then come in and ask for the rezoning.
Anyone else wish to comment?
One more question. So Danny, if they establish this line, if that's, if you get that established, then we rezon, then they can come back and do whatever they want to with these, I mean, they don't have to come back to, to cut this up into six acre tracks or five acre tracks. Is that correct?
I mean, that's the way I would see it, is, is long as there's a line there, because we can't do anything off just something that is an idea or proposed or hypothetical, you know, whatever. Yeah, and I think that's the route we should take, the route that probably should be taken.
And plat this as a, as a subdivision, we can rezon this whole section in the green as A2 and then they can do what they want to do with that and this down here would remain I2.
Yeah, what, what it has been. Yes, sir.
Chairman, on my floor. Yes, Commissioner Isbell.
The way that this committee works is this commission really listens to our committees. I don't think there's anything ever been overturned that Planning Commission has sent up here because they have very, a lot of confidence in this Planning Commission. And I can tell you, by being the new guy on there, these people really know what they're doing, the people sitting on Planning Commission. So I think if you'll just follow, you know, I, I think they gave you an instruction, I think you'd probably be okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, no more comments, I'm going to end the public hearing. Someone else wish to speak?
I'm just asking about the status of the badges.
That's to be taken up under the next meeting.
Okay, that's what I can hear.
All right.
Well, yeah, he's a veteran and I thought we ought to say. Been before several.
Do you have a presentation?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I'd like to.
I was thinking.
We are ASAP of Anderson. We are celebrating 10 years of prevention powered by more than 11,000 hours given by volunteers like you. Together, we've reduced underage substance misuse in our county by 53 and a half percent.
Distinguished Vice Chairman, Commissioner Creasy.
Appearance.
Appearance. Oh, I skipped, let me go to appearances. I always do that. I skipped a spot here. Thank you, sir. Appearance of citizens, if you would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda, come up, state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes. Oh, I got flashes back here from the back. Commissioner Smallridge is not here, so everybody's checked in. All righty. But Commissioner Smallridge, Commissioners did send a message, prayers with him and his wife as they do some family business and certainly thoughts with them. So, back to the folks out here, do you have anything on the, that's not on the agenda that you'd like to speak to? Please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and you have three minutes. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about? Okay, we'll go in. Oh, sorry, come on up, sir. Yes, sir. Please state your name, your address.
My name is Robert Kapulka.
Sorry, Robert, right to the, yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is Robert Kapulka. I live at 3098 Norris Freeway. That is approximately an eighth of a mile and my neighbor Josh Bell, Josh Gray is here also. And that, that proposed rezoning and, actually, it's not a rezoning, but to use that land for anything other than residential or, or pasture is going to significantly change the whole character of that neighborhood. And I think there is going to be a, a lot of things that are going to happen after that to change that, that whole area. There is an industrial park across the street and they've been good neighbors to this point. The convenience center is being placed down the road about a quarter mile and I think it's going to, it's going to add a lot to that neighborhood, but not in a positive way. And I think that further development, such as some kind of industrial use, I think is going to really change the whole character of that neighborhood and that area. So I, I, I speak for myself and probably some of the people who couldn't be here tonight. There is, there's a grave concern over what may transpire with that property on, on Norris Freeway. So I just want to make that mention tonight.
Thank you, Robert. I appreciate you coming to speak. That will be the next item we bring up and the Vice Chairman here will be speaking toward, to that issue and, and, but we appreciate you giving your words right then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your discussion and thoughts and ideas and concerns. Anybody else? Okay. Well, seeing no one else, we'll move on to the public hearing report by Vice, wait a minute, approval and corrections agenda. Come on, guys, y'all help me out here.
Somebody give him a copy of the agenda.
I've got one, believe it or not.
We need to approve the consent.
Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any changes on the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is the regular agenda. Commissioner Meredith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to move item 14, which is our resolutions on the TIFs. We have folks here from out of town. I'd like to get them heard under five, uh, excuse me, under 6A, please.
Have a motion to move.
After the elections.
Item 14, resolutions under 5A. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? 6A? I thought you said 5.
Either one's fine.
Let's go 6A. You did say elections.
Yes, sir, I did.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. I might need to just take a pass and I go home. Okay, so it's going to be under 6A, we're getting ready to vote. Did you have something else, Commissioner Scott, on that item?
Yes, sir. Item number 12, which is the committee board reports. We have operations committee report. I'd like to ask that that actually gets moved up to where item seven is with the committee reports as we have people here.
Let me, let me come back to you. Let's vote this one in.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I, I'm on the same page, we're both out of kilter here. Okay, any other discussion on moving item 14 to under 6A under elections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Commissioner Scott.
I apologize, I'm just, gentlemen and lady, I'm looking at items that need to be moved. But we have folks here that are coming up on the operations committee and I don't think they need to wait all night. I prefer that they'd actually get moved up to where item seven is, where it says committee reports.
Second.
All right, so you would like to move the whole operations or just?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Nissbo, you good with that? Okay. So we have a motion to move the operations report up to committee reports.
Make it the third item.
Third item.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and got a second on that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Mead.
I need a motion to be going to executive session at the end of new business at the end of the meeting and then return to new business if needed.
Have a motion for executive session.
Second.
At the end of the meeting, got a second. Any discussion on that item? Here and none, Commissioner Mead, let's, if you're okay with that, we'll move it to 14A under new business. Actually, we could just make it 14 because all the items.
In a way, it's part of, it's part of the, of, but 14 was moved, so.
Yeah, we'll just make it 14.
Just make it 14?
Yes, sir.
And again, that's to go into executive session and then return to new business if needed.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Any other items on the agenda? All right, see you none.
We'd like to approve the amendments, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now, Vice Chairman Creasy, I apologize for all the false starts. Thank you, Chairman. We had a public hearing where we heard from a, or had a discussion on the rezoning of property at the intersection of Mountain Road and Norris Freeway. That's all I have. Vice Chairman Creasy, those are my kind of the report. Yes, I mean, to the gentleman that spoke and the neighbor, there was no action taken. I think it's going to go back and some more talk will be going. I know both Commissioners in the district, Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Waddell are following it very closely and I encourage you to reach out to them, I'm sure you do. They'll be happy to speak with you. Okay, we'll move on to elections. Next piece of business is to elect a chairman and then a vice chairman. Commissioner Isbell. Commissioner Isbell.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Commissioner Waddell as chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Jerry White. Any other nominations? I don't want to cut nobody off. This is your opportunity. If you want to jump into this seat, you can certainly take it if you'd like. Yes, sir.
Make a motion that nomination ceases and that you be elected by acclamation.
Have a motion and a second. Any opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all.
Before you take any nominations, I'd like to speak on the vice chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. I appreciate your vote of confidence, and I'll do the best I can and look forward to continuing the business.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. You've done an outstanding job over the past year.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And that's why kind of everybody was chiming and tripping over each other to say second.
Well, I appreciate it, but as you all know, it's not just me. It's all of us. And I really appreciate the mayor and Jay and everyone working together, all the departments. And it's not been easy, especially with the budget that came through. But I think as a county, we all work together, and it all shows. And everyone brings something to the table, and that's what makes it work, so I appreciate everyone.
You represent us well.
We represent everyone, each other will. That's the way I look at it. But I appreciate the comments. I really do. Vice Chairman Creasy would like to say a few words before we take up the next vote.
Yeah, before we take up the vote on vice chair, I'd like to say that I want to thank County Commission and all those here at the courthouse who have supported me over the years in the positions I've held. And I think it'd be good tonight that I not put my name up for nomination and remain a county commissioner over to one side and let the younger people... I've served for... Next August will be 30 years. And I've just about done everything. And if I may continue, thank you for the applause. I've done just about everything one can do on County Commission. I've started several committees with the help of Robert and County Commission over the years. The Computer Committee, Communications Committee, the ADA Committee, and the Veterans Committee, which I'm very proud to have helped get that started and off the ground. So, I think I've had a good career at being a County Commission, and I hope I have served everyone well in that position. And I certainly appreciate the respect you have given me. And I'll take my name out for any other nominations. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Creasy, we appreciate you, and I think the applause says it all. It's always an honor. This is going to be odd for me because we always got to sit next to each other, so... I'll be honest, the thought went through my mind to move to a different chair or two. But I'm happy to sit here if the fellow commissioners want me to be here. Obviously, they do, so I'm going to do it. But it did go through my mind just what you thought as well, because I think it's healthy for the body to have new people, new blood to come in and speak. And so, this will be my last rodeo as chairman, I'll tell you now. So, next year, go ahead and get prepared. Someone else can step in this spot. I'm not interested in having titles and accolades. I'm interested in us moving the county forward, just like you've taught me all these years, so I appreciate it. So, thank you. Let's move on now to selecting or nominations of a vice chair. Commissioner Mead.
I'd like to nominate Chuck Fritz for vice chair.
Have a nomination of Chuck Fritz. Have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I respectfully decline.
Well, I tried.
Who's the chair of the Rules Committee? Can we make him? Can we make him?
No, we can't make him.
I guess your motion is...
Well, I apologize for not having talked to him beforehand. I did surprise him.
Well, I'm sure Commissioner Fritz sees it as an honor, but... So, you withdraw your motion, I assume?
Well, yeah, if he...
It's just a nomination.
If he turns it down, then it's moot.
Commissioner White, sir.
I nominate Josh Anderson.
We have a nomination for Josh Anderson. Any other nominations? Yes, sir.
Make a motion, nomination ceases, and we elect Josh Anderson as vice chair by acclamation.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Come on over here, Mr. Anderson.
We need somebody good in charge of vice.
Alright, welcome aboard, sir. Commissioner Creasy, did you have something, sir? I apologize. I left you out when you finished your report earlier so quick. He had something he'd like to say. I appreciate the time.
And this morning, we lost a good friend, Gene Hicks, Oak Ridge. He's a Korea War veteran, served his country there, and he also served at... Working for the plants in Oak Ridge. And he was a past president of the Sons of the Revolution. And he came before this County Commission several times, promoting the plaque that we have out at the Veterans Memorial, listing the names of those American Revolution patriots. And that gave this county a lot of pride because there's so many descendants here related to those people that's on that monument. The old Anderson County names that you see in here every day are on that monument. And Gene worked real hard to get that done. And... But he passed away this morning, and I just wanted to recognize him and speak a word for him in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Prayers and thoughts are with him, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Josh, I'm not sure anybody educated you or not, but on the first meeting, your job as the vice chairman is to take over immediately and handle the rest of the meeting. You took it in stride. I like that. You're going to do fine. Okay, next... Oh, I guess I have to do a parliamentarian? You know, that TV show or whatever it is, Here's Your Sign? You see his bag on his lap? Looks like his sign is... He's ready to... Man, I got another one ready to move away from me. Are you guys sure you want me to remain in this spot? I mean, they're flying out of here. You're not interested, I assume, in the...
If you find no other takers, I'll stay, but I...
Well, it's not takers. It's, you know, the chairman asks. So, okay, Commissioner Jaeger, would you like to be the parliamentarian again?
No, thank you.
Okay. I shouldn't have whipped him. My audition got reaction. That's what he said.
And I didn't see anybody else.
Would there be anybody that would like to be parliamentarian? Commissioner Tammy, would you? No? Golly. Hey, where's all the support I had earlier?
I'd like to be...
You'd like to be what?
I'd like to be parliamentarian, sir.
You'd like to stay?
I think no one...
You changed your mind?
No, but no one else has stepped ahead.
Alright. Thank you, guys.
No, 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 no. I just want to make sure that we retain our fine parliamentarian, Mr. Phil Jaeger.
Alright, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Make this quick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Well, I would say that at the point of order, we do have to close the nomination.
Okay. Yes, sir. It's at the point of the chairman?
It's not the chair.
Thank you.
Oh, it's not actually.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Alright. Okay. So, thank you, sir, for remaining on. I appreciate it. Alright, yeah, parliamentarian. I promise I'll be easier this year. Okay, let's move on. Nominating Committee Report by Chairman Fritz, sir.
Thank you. The first item on the list was the nomination for... On the fill in vacancy on the Anderson County Beer Board. Commissioner Isbell moved to approve. The only advocate we had was Jeff Watson to the beer board with a term expiring on 9/22. It was seconded by Commissioner Mead, but no one else applied. So, I moved that we approved this appointment.
Have a motion by Commissioner Isbell to support, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion?
Press the button for...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
The next item on the list was the list of County Commission Committee and Boards that was presented on our list for everyone to see. I don't think there's been any changes at all. Everybody's happy to stay where they were at. So, but we need to prove it for the coming year. So, I submit the list of committees and boards for the County Commission for the next coming year for approval.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fritz as presented, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg.
Are we going to use the board? I intended to second the motion, but...
Well, seeing that the chairman is making a report, I'm going to yield to him on this one. So, he's got the motion. Denenberg seconded. Commissioner Isbell?
I want to say, Mr. Chairman, is that hats off to the Budget Committee and to Chairman White for the outstanding job, tough job, that they had to do this year. And with the help of our interim Finance Director and the mayor, I think they did a great job. So, hats off to you all. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner White. Tough job, but it is a good committee. Sorry, go ahead. Do we vote on that?
No.
All in favor, say aye, as presented, seconded. Okay. Any opposed, motion carries. Sorry, Commissioner Fritz, go ahead.
The last item on the list for the month of September, there are several of our boards and everything from the County Commission. There are a few that are coming available for this during the month of September. We have had a very big problem to get anyone showing any interest or desire to even fill these positions. So, the committee made the motion that these people who are on these committees, their terms are expiring this month, have all expressed interest of staying on these committees and continuing to serve. So, Commissioner Anderson made the motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner Isbell to allow these people to continue to serve in their present position and continue going as is. So, I move that we accept these people as presented.
So, got a motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? Jay, we allowed to do that, okay, without...
What I understand from Commissioner Fritz is no one interested.
Right.
You can always take recommendations from the audience if anybody's interested in serving on any of these committees. If that's the case...
Which committees is it? Is it the... What page are we on?
Let's see. We got one on the...
Are these all County?
All County Commission meetings.
That's four committees?
No. And they all expired during the month of September of this year.
Okay. Is there anyone out there that would like to be on any boards before we take a vote, just to make sure? I don't know what all ones they are, but to Chairman Fritz's point, we've got some different Septembers. I don't see the ones that are... I... You know, I think he's interested in every committee. Well, hearing no one else interested, we have a motion, we have a second. Everyone that you said that's on would like to stay on, is what you're saying, right, Chairman Fritz? Any other discussions or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Chairman Fritz. Appreciate it. Okay. Next is the reappointment of Jack Shelton to the Anderson County Water Authority Board. Mayor, is that your appointment?
Yes, sir.
Was you going to do that during your committee, or would you like to do it now, or...
I can do it now.
That's what... We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion on that, or Mayor, would you like to say anything before we take a vote?
Alright, no, sir.
No questions, no comments? All in favor of being appointed? Who we got here? Jack Shelton, I'm sorry. Ricky's next. I was getting ready to say Ricky. Commissioner Jameson, yes, sir.
Do we have a commissioner on that board?
No.
No. No, sir.
Is there some reason why?
There hasn't ever been one that I know of.
Not since the Water Authority, I don't think.
Yeah. It's... They usually make recommendations to me, and then I accept the recommendations, so...
Any other discussion on that? All in favor of Jack Shelton being reappointed to the Anderson County Water Authority Board, term expiring 9/23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is the reappointment of Ricky Rose to the Anderson County Water Authority Board, term expiring 9/23.
Second.
Got a motion by White, thank you, sir, seconded by Commissioner Scott. There you go. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Okay, next is going to be 6A, which is going to be the resolutions. Commissioner Meredith, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commission, for allowing to move these projects up. If the chair and commission will allow, I'd kind of like to facilitate this as far as who's going to speak.
Okay with the body?
Is that alright?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to bring up Mr. Bear Stevens. He is the chairman of the Industrial Board of Anderson County. As you see in your package, you've got resolutions for each one of these projects. I think he wants to explain the process of the Industrial Board and how these projects were vetted through his board. So, we'll start with him, and then we'll go into the projects, so... Bear?
Thank you, Commissioner Meredith. Hello, Mr. Bear.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
I've been watching you for the last year off and on. You do a good job for this commission.
Thank you, sir.
And I know, Josh, you'll fill right in, and evidently, Commissioner Creasy, you got tired of helping drive this bus. You're going to sit in the back of the bus for a while. But anyway, I am chairman of the Anderson County Industrial Bond Board, and we have three different business entities that have been approved by the Industrial Bond Board as being viable projects for the county. We have a review committee. There's nine people on the Industrial Bond Board. We have a review committee made up of David Hopper from Norris, who has owned his own business for years up in Norris. We have Robert Baird, who is a lifelong career banker, is working at a bank over Knoxville now. And we have... He's now retired. CUB...
Ernie Bowles.
Ernie Bowles. The three of them make up the review committee. And they go through the review committee, and they determine whether or not these projects are... Meet our matrix of qualifications that have been passed by this commission to be a viable project and move forward and be worthy of a TIF. The minimum size of project is $3 million. And only 20% of that $3 million investment can be used in a TIF, which is for... And I know, Steve Mead, I remember that night that you so eloquently educated everybody on this commission about TIFs and how they work and the purpose for them in making projects viable that otherwise perhaps may not be. But all three of these projects have gone... But, all three of these projects have gone through the process, the discussion with the full board, with the recommendation from our review committee, and they are now, have they already been before City Council?
Next week.
They'll be before City Council, Clinton City Council next week, and here they are before you tonight for your recommendation, for your vote on each of these projects. But like I say, all three of these projects have been deemed very good projects for the county by a unanimous vote of the nine members of the Industrial Development Board. And, Mr. Meredith, do you wanna call them up?
Sure.
You, you're, you're in charge now.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think it would be, if there are any questions for the chair of the Industrial Board, feel free to ask now.
Yeah, you have, anybody have any questions?
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Stevens? Commissioner Denenberg, and by the way, Commissioners, page ninety-four in your packet, if you're looking for the information. Go ahead, Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, I guess the only question I do have is, why twenty years on some of these TIFs?
To be very candid with you, these are from the recommendations. There's two people who are not here tonight on vacation. One is, what Mamantov's first name is?
Mark.
Mark. Mr. Mark Mamantov, who is the attorney that is representing all three of these entities. And they have, through their business model and business plan, they have made this recommendation. And then Phil Crye, who is the attorney for the Industrial Bond Board, he's on vacation this week. So that's the reason I'm up here. But I cannot answer your question, Mr. Commissioner Denenberg, but...
Perhaps, uh, Commissioner Meredith?
Commissioner Denenberg, your, your question will be answered with the next speaker.
Thank you.
On the pro... We, I understand that's an issue. By the way, Commissioners, you all know I came to Operations and Budget Committee to present these, just in theory. So, yes, we have that question down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, uh, and I appreciate you coming to Operations and, and answering most of the questions. This is just something that kinda came up in the last week, but, uh, the, the sales tax revenue, I know that's kinda what, what drives the, the reason for having TIFs and everything. How, how is that matrix or formula, how does it take into consid- does it take into consideration, um, what we would, like cannibalization, or, or, like, for instance, tractor supply come in, how that affects co-op sales or something? Where, do we, do we subtract some from what co-op does?
No.
And say, okay?
It's just strictly new income, as far as sales tax.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Fritz, sir?
I have been very, 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 very supportive over TIFs over the years, but since we just had a major tax increase, and then, and, uh, she's talked about the twenty years, I have really struggled looking at these TIFs. Especially since, uh, the farmer's co-op market here in, uh, Clinton just did a major renovation here a while back, and they didn't do nothing with the TIF. And you had things like Kroger's in Oak Ridge, did what they did in Oak Ridge. And, uh, you look at the people they hired and, uh, and everything like that, and the largest size that Kroger's is, and the bigger building they built and everything like that, and they did it all without a TIF. You got these buildings over here, and right now, Vance Autos, they're building, the, uh, new Dollar General. And I think what Vance Autos right now is gonna hire just probably as many as I hear the, uh, that...
They're moving on.
The tractor suppliers, uh, uh, they are, uh, gonna be hiring. And when I see all that's been done in the past and this, that, and other major industry, I can support, I think, you know, the, uh... But with the, these small things like that, and when we don't do all the businesses that way, I just, I'm having a real time struggle in supporting a, uh, a TIF, especially for twenty years on something like that. And, uh, uh, and that's where, unfortunately, uh, I think that's where the, what we, uh, uh, look, uh, the guidelines we give, uh, for approval of TIFs, maybe we need to look, look at and reevaluate. Cause I think, uh, uh, it's going in the other direction of what we really intended it to be. And, uh, uh, when we're needing, cause, I mean, we're, we're needing growth in the county, but we don't, we need to see things where we don't see anything for the next twenty years or so. I mean, I just have, I, cause usually, how many, uh, things like that's gotta come before you actually start seeing it pile up, or where it starts to benefit the county? And, uh, I, you'll believe how many people's contacted me and tell me, you know, that, uh, uh, with all the stuff that's going on, that, uh, they did it without the TIFs, and here we are benefiting a few that, uh... If it's major industries like ISN, or the, the things that we've done for the, the things in Oak Ridge, I could really see it. But here, I, I'm having a real time of struggling to support any of these.
I think Commissioner Fritz, I appreciate your comments, but I think when you hear from each three of these projects and what they're gonna be bringing for employment and sales tax revenue and, and development, success brings success, and the more development that we have, the more development we're going to have. So at this time, no...
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, got a couple more questions, and Commissioners, to Bear's point, if you, if you'd like to hold back, but you're certainly gonna have the first right to talk, okay? Uh, and I'll go to Commissioner Waddell next, but if you would like to hold your comments until the, they all make their presentation, but if you'd like to say something now, go ahead. Commissioner Waddell?
So, just real quickly, my first question would be, thi- this is gonna be a huge windfall for the city of Clinton and for the county schools, because they, they get the retail, uh, or the sales tax. How much of that is gonna go to our general fund? How much is that gonna go towards, you know, the ambulance service, the solid waste, uh, the Sheriff's Department, our fire departments? One of the things that, that I, I, I agree with what, what Commissioner Fritz said was that twenty years is a long time, and we just raise taxes on our citizens, on our property owners. And if I voted yes to this, I would be saying that even though the people in my district are going to be paying more in taxes this year, because we didn't have enough money to fund our budget, we're gonna allow industries to come in here and, or businesses, and not pay their fair share. I think that we should also take a real close look at this and develop some, uh, some stricter guidelines, because I, I do know I spoke to some of the developers, and I know that some of the things they wanna do, they've paid, they've paid property taxes for ten, twelve years, and they have a lot of money in these, in these, uh, projects. We've gotta make sure that this is profitable for the county and profitable for the businesses coming here. A- as it, as it sits right now, I don't see a way that it is profitable for the county. For a twenty-year TIF, um, I think that's extremely too long. We just did a ten-year, and I, I was the only one that voted no for the ten-year on this board, and I, I actually thought that was too long. I, I still think it was a bad deal. I would like to see this board put this off, and us put our heads together, and come up with a plan that is beneficial for the county and beneficial for industries, businesses that are coming here, because some of this is, is necessary. I, I've just got a lot of questions on, i- if it's a million-dollar TIF and they don't spend a million dollars, who's, who's watching that? Where's the oversight? How do we know that they've spent that much money? Um, how, how do we, uh, if the property values increase, you know, how does that affect it? All those things are, are something we've gotta consider, and I'm not prepared to, to jump on this and do it overnight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, a, a couple of things. You know, TIFs are a strange thing. I'm, I'm a little bit dubious of the twenty years personally, okay? But, keep in mind, uh, the sales tax, somebody already said, you know, that primarily goes to the schools, okay? Cause that's where most of the sales tax revenues go, and for, for the county and city schools. But, it's not a bad thing for the county to have more funding for our schools. Okay, that's, that certainly not a bad thing. The other thing is, these companies are gonna bring employment, they're gonna be talking about some of the details, and employees, uh, pay local taxes, and some rent or buy homes in the county, and their kids attend schools, that brings more funding and more activity into the county that's to its profit. And in additionally, these new retail outlets are gonna draw people from other counties into our county to, to spend retail money, and while they're here, they may eat in our restaurants and buy some gas and help pay for our roads and a bunch of other things while they're here. So there, there's, there's, when you're bringing a, a significant business activity into the county, there's much more to it than just the sales tax. And there was a question about, what if the property values go up? That's great. When the property values go up, the money that's paid towards taxes goes up, and the TIF gets paid off early. That's what happened in Oak Ridge.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one, one thing that I, I would request is that we wouldn't make a motion until after everybody was heard. But, uh, when we first started talking about this, I looked at it in a negative view, kinda like some of the other Commissioners did about we just raised taxes. And then, what it is, I went back to this report that we all got from the State Comptroller, and I went to the IDB Board, and I talked to some of the developers and to the landowners and, and all that, and I, sometimes I like to pride myself on trying to be a mediator. And looked at what we could do to help the, uh, the people that's already invested, is that maybe we could do an abatement going forward, to save, for instance, the co-op wanted to do another expansion, uh, maybe there's something we could do there. I spoke with the city manager of Rocky Top to see what they could do from the city council, uh, to change their matrix, to make it more presentable. You know, you're not looking, people's not gonna come up there and maybe spend three million dollars, but they may spend eight hundred thousand, which we just had. So maybe we could change that matrix and make this, you know, all palatable for everybody. And, but what we're looking at, and Commissioner Meredith, uh, if, if I'm incorrect, but we're looking at about a total of eight hundred fifty thousand dollars in revenue a year in sales tax. And maybe if, as we go through, and I spoke with Mayor Burton and Mayor Frank, you know, I spoke with, you know, all the players and, and got their ideas and, and, you know, what, what they felt like, because that's what we do, we're here to serve, you know, our people. But, uh, I would like to, you know, hopefully that we'll wait till after everybody has spoke, make a motion, and then I, you know, I've got just a little plan, but, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. We don't have a motion on the floor right now. So, good discussion, I, Commissioner Bear?
Just to close out discussion, I think we need to hear from the presentations of the three projects, in all fairness.
Yes.
But let me, let me give a little history. Four and a half years ago, this body, which, there's some Commissioners was not here when these policies and procedures were vetted out by the Industrial Board, the Chamber and the stuff, you know. It was thought out that the Chamber would head the retail development for the county outside of Oak Ridge, because Oak Ridge has their own retail developer, Mr. Ray Evans, and a third party. Well, guess what? You know, Oak Ridge was great enough to get them all, eighty-five million dollar project, thirteen million dollar TIF. And I know I was one here when Mark Mamantov stood in this well, and we supported that. And I know some of you Commissioners were not here, but that TIF is doing wonderful for Oak Ridge as you see the developments. We don't, the vote don't come back, because they did a TIF district. So anything that's within that circle is handled by the Industrial Board. We've already approved that, and it's a twenty-year TIF. We just approved our, and our properties, Rick Chen's Mixuse apart, where the old Amzy side is, for Mixuse Retail on the bottom, Housing on the top. So, you know, I understand, Commissioner Waddell, I get it, you're not, you've not been here in that process. I understand the questions. But the re- that, that, that matrix, as Bear pointed out, can be changed by this body, as well as the Industrial Board. It can be changed for Rocky Top, you can do a TIF for two hundred thousand dollars. If we wanna focus in on the economically distressed parts of our county, that's the way we do it. But, we set the three million dollar threshold four and a half years ago. This is, th- these three will be the fourth project outside of Oak Ridge in the county that we've dealt with. This body, as well as Clinton City Council, can go back and change these matrices as we move forward with progress. But I also, as was pointed out about the Budget Committee by Commissioner Isbell, we worked hard on the budget. It was like pulling rabbits out of hats sometime, right, Mr. Chairman? You know, and all I heard was anticipated growth, or we're gonna get this money in, or we're gonna get this money in. And now tonight, we're sitting here with three projects in our lap with an investment. Does Anderson County benefit from any of these three projects? Absolutely. It's called return on investment. It's not just what you see on these resolutions and what they're, it's what they're gonna bring, it's the local spend. When they're gonna buy material in Anderson County, they're gonna create construction jobs, it's to Commissioner Mead's point. So it's just, not just about that. And I know twenty years gives us heartburn, but we've approved those projects by this, some of Commissioners here. And before we go, I'm gonna let, uh, Josh Bishop come up, he's the first resolutions, he's with Project Black Horse. Bear, thank you very much, appreciate your... And I think he can shed some light on the twenty-year, that everybody has a little heartburn, how these dollars are spent and how it's broken out. He represents the development, which is Glen Alpine, which we see as across from Golden Girls. Also, Jay's here to answer any other legal questions, but between the both of them, I think you can get some of these questions answered that I can't answer on the legal side, so, Josh?
Just real quickly, Josh, if you don't mind, Commissioner Creasy had rung in, I wanna give him the opportunity to speak, and it'll, you'll be next, sir, I guarantee it. No, you stand right, you're fine, you're fine right there.
I'll concede, I can hold up.
Okay.
I only had one question.
Go ahead.
The question was, has this been before the Clinton City Council yet?
Cause Monday night, the twenty-third, Mr. Creasy.
Next Monday?
Yes, sir. The mayor's here, if we would like to hear from the mayor of Clinton, he is in attendance.
Yeah, I would like to hear from him on that.
Let's let him present first, and we'll close out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorry, Josh, go ahead, sir.
Thank you for having me. My name is Josh Bishop, I'm an attorney in Knoxville. Uh, I am general counsel for, uh, Black Horse Capital Partners, but I'm also an owner of Black Horse, so I think I can address at least a lot of the specific questions that I've heard posed this evening on behalf of Black Horse, and how it relates to the project on Sinking Springs Road. So to give you a little bit of background about us and what we've done, we've done several developments in Anderson County and throughout Knox County. But specifically, we just completed a Verizon in Oak Ridge, we also did the retail shops on Highway sixty-one across the street from Sinking Springs, has the Petro's, Advanced Financial, uh, that, that retail shop. So that should give you a feel for, um, you know, the kinda flavor that we hope to bring to the community up here. When we started looking at the property across the street for, seeing the way that Sinking Springs comes in at an angle with the gas station, uh, the parcel's not as usable, because currently, the road comes in at an angle, and it, it really kind of would push any development further off the road, and any retailer would want better visibility on sixty-one. So when we started looking at the challenges associated with that project, the first thing that we identified was, is if we could realign Sinking Springs Road and potentially make it more of an access road, which would run parallel with sixty-one, it would increase the road frontage on sixty-one, and therefore the value of the land and the viability of the project. So, that was our initial challenge. The other projects we've done in Anderson County, we have not asked for a TIF, as I think several pointed out, and not every project needs a TIF, and we're not the developer that says we need a TIF for everything. However, because in this project, because of the relocation of the road and the way that we are basically going to straighten it out, and then have it tee-in, hopefully with a red light in the future that could benefit the neighbors, either the big box that we could potentially do in the back, or the neighbors across the street to be able to make a left-hand turn from, I think it's the Doe Run subdivision that's over there. We're, we're trying to line it up for the future, and we're trying to set the development up in a way that we'll be proud in, in twenty years that it was, it was done this way. And so, I think with respect to the length of the TIF, it's very important to say that what we've done and the way that a TIF works, I, I just kinda speak generally to that first, is, is that the Industrial Development Board basically signs non-recourse notes, so they're not recourse. The only thing that the IDB pledges is the incremental tax income that is generated from a property. So the existing tax base, as it stands today, is not at risk, it all still gets paid and applied the same way. But what a TIF effectively does through a development agreement is, is the increase that will be generated, assuming that this, you know, this body gives us permission and approves our TIF, and that the city council does as well, then the increased revenue that are generated by the property taxes will actually support the repayment of the notes. The other point that I wanna make sure that everybody understands is, is that personally, as... as the developer, we also sign. So if we were to, and I mean personal liability, so if we were to get a TIF approved, and let's say that it doesn't come out of the ground on schedule, if things get delayed, if there is a window of time where retail, if we have a great recession, any of those things, which, I mean, honestly, anything can happen, so I would never rule out anything, any of those terms, we are personally liable for the repayment of that. Because if the incremental tax revenues don't support the money that has been borrowed, then we personally have to pay those out of pocket. And I think that's the key thing to understand when we talk about a 20-year repayment. Because what 20 years does is it gives us a little bit of runway to say, if year one and two, the taxes don't go up immediately, because in a project like ours where we're relocating the road, we have some tenants that are teed up, but we can't sign a deal with them because if we don't relocate the road, they don't come. They want the right visibility and setbacks off Highway 61. So until we get this approval, we then go and formalize our deal with the tenants and then hopefully start construction, and you'll see some ground turning. And the important piece of the 20 years is, is that, and I think, I think you referenced it earlier, that if it gets paid off, if we generate these revenues and the project goes quote-unquote as planned, it may turn out to be a 10-year TIF. Because there is no additional money. It's not that the last 10 years, the developer sits there with a break that it hasn't earned. And so the amount of money that is in our TIF specifically, it's authorized up to $1,250,000. So those funds, the way, and this will kind of tie into addressing how that is, how is it administered to know what the money goes to. So just like a construction loan that you would go and get from any local lender, there's basically a draw process. And if this, if this TIF is authorized, there's a development agreement that's entered into, and it specifically lays out what can those funds be used for. And so just as if you're building a house and you go and pour the foundation and you call your banker up and you say, we've poured the foundation, this guy needs to be paid $20,000, well, they have an inspector or an architect or an engineer, comes out, signs off on that, and then submits it to the bank for approval, and the bank may independently inspect, et cetera. Well, in the TIF process, it works very similarly in that there is a certification not only to, not only to our lender who would be administering it, and they would be dispersing the construction loan proceeds to us or our contractors, but then that certification also goes to the Industrial Development Board because expenses that aren't authorized don't qualify. And so theoretically, you could end up authorizing a $2 million TIF, but if someone only has $1 million of eligible expenses, that's the max that they can actually pull. And so I guess what I'd like to stress this evening is to tell you that there is a little give and take, and there are some estimates, and it's an inexact science. It's not, I don't think anybody could stand up here and say to the penny, this is how exactly it's going to go down because we live in the real world. Hopefully, it works out better. But I know in this circumstance, what we feel like we're doing is we are realigning a road that would otherwise, for the city or county, to go ahead and kind of fix this issue and create the value would be an expense, whereas what we're using this TIF for is basically a way for the municipalities to finance these improvements without coming out of pocket and having a capital expenditure. So I think that's my introduction, but I'd be glad to answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Any questions for Mr. Bishop?
Just to clarify, though, the alignment of that road is for your all's benefit. It is, the majority of it is for your benefit because that road separates your two pieces of property, correct?
Hundred percent. Absolutely. There is no doubt about it. What it does is it creates, whereas right now, there is only a limited amount of road frontage on Highway 61, by realigning the road and coming in straight at a tee, and instead of at that angle with a couple of the, you know, there's like four curb cuts there, it clearly benefits our parcel. I mean, if we didn't think it benefited, we wouldn't ask for a TIF because if the property values don't go up after we develop this, then we're paying all the money back anyway. All we've done is come ask for, you know, basically a loan that we've got to turn around and repay back. So it really does, the only way that this works for us is if it works for the government as well, which is, is that we're able to do a project that wouldn't be supported. Because if we have to go and realign that road, then the cost becomes prohibitive to put the retail down there. Sure, we could potentially put one, you know, one center back there and try to do something a little further off the road, but we don't believe it's the highest and best use for the way that that road works. And I think, you know, long-term, creating an access road that would run parallel with 61, it opens up the acreage in the back, which we're also the owners of, and we would like to eventually see, you know, a more substantial retail or back there.
Is that the only thing that you're going to use this TIF for, or is there, what else other than the road?
Yeah, so basically, it is the road, the acquisition. So we have, this is important to know as well, we have acquired a couple of pieces of property from the state of Tennessee because there's multiple curb cuts right now. If you understand, if you've seen how it comes in, of course, that's state right-of-way. So in order to realign this and make this work, we've had to acquire a couple pieces of property. There's also to straighten it out and give it the correct amount of depth. We've also acquired another piece of property, so there is some land purchase that is included in that. There are some utility realignments and grading work to bring everything to, put the road on grade to where it'll feed into 61 correctly. But it is, there's no economic incentive to any third party or anything along those lines. It's all basic construction costs to get it from A to B. But I wanted to be clear that I didn't misrepresent to you that it is just asphalt, so to speak. So it's a little bit more than that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions for Mr. Bishop? Commissioner Yeager.
Do you have a timeline when you do get approval, when things start?
Sure, absolutely. So we have, I mean, we, this is a challenging project from a developer's perspective because every tenant has their own timeline. They need to open a certain number of stores. They need that predictability. Of course, as we've navigated this process through, with the chamber's help, and they've been extremely beneficial to kind of keep us abreast of that and keep us in front of the issues in the timeframe. So we have tenants that basically, as soon as we can say, yes, I can guarantee you that there's going to be a road realignment, here's what the access will look like, then we would like to start construction around the beginning of this year and on the first two buildings. So that's our, that's our internal timeline. The way the TIF works, obviously, gives us a little bit more time than that to do it. Of course, that's on our nickel, because if the taxes don't increase, all of a sudden, we're basically just spending, spending that money to pay the debt service. So we're incentivized to get it as moving as fast as possible, but until we have a fully signed deal with a tenant, we're a little bit hamstrung.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have you been, with the plans for moving the road, has there been any discussion with TDOT or any evaluation yet, or with the city of Clinton about how that will impact the Hunter's Trail subdivision, if that's, if that's, how that's going to affect traffic? And then I've got one more question.
So absolutely, yes. We've been in contact with TDOT, and I think, number one, TDOT is excited to see the closure of those multiple curb cuts. Anytime what, you know, the design is, is for us to have kind of a main road that tees in to the newly realigned Sinking Springs. And I realize I'm moving with my hands here, or talking with my hands, but, but the idea is, is that that would be a main intersection that hopefully, dependent upon whatever goes and develops in the, in the back of the property, would at some point warrant a red light. And we are specifically lining it up with the Doe Run road so that if that is a red light, there would be a potential for a left turn in the future. So we're trying to do it with the fourth side that benefits the other side of the street, even though it's not directly involved in our, in, you know, in our development. The other key piece of it is, is that, you know, TDOT is always sensitive to stacking, so they're very, they're very warm and accepting of the idea of closing three or four curb cuts to get one. But for us to get the red light, we'll have to show some more justification, and that'll be a future project. So I do want to be clear that we've not been promised, nor am I promising a red light to you.
Mayor, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Josh, the city's already requested that traffic study as a part of the whole study for the whole boulevard, so that's in the, that's in the works per city manager.
Second question?
Yeah, the second one, is there, are you able to share any details about who you are looking at or maybe have lined up?
At this, at this point, we're not. And, you know, to be 100% candid, as we said before, if we weren't able to get the TIF, it's kind of erase the drawing board and go back to it because everything is kind of dependent upon, upon that. I can tell you that we would make some announcements almost immediately after it's done, so.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Isible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I understand you've done a development already there with the Petro's and all that is, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It has been very successful, hasn't it?
We think so. We think it's, we're proud of what we've done.
We appreciate your investment in Anderson County. Now, when you do this across the street, I'm sure you have a target audience that you're going, is it going to be residential? Is it going to be, who's going to be your target audience?
Primarily on Highway 61, it will be retail. Because I think that that is a very, you know, it's a high-traffic area, high visibility. We feel like that that will be, what I'll call the frontage, will be primarily retail. In the back, there is some, so my partners and I have also developed some medical office buildings on Frank Diggs there as well. If you look very close to where Sinking Springs comes into Frank Diggs. So the back portion could be used for a lot of different things, whether it's medical offices or whether it's put together for a large-box retail, but that is still up in the air. But what you'll see on the front is the, is the retail development. That'll be primarily retail and restaurants.
What's the plausibility for a big-box development? Do you feel pretty confident in that?
Well, here's what I do feel, you know, we don't have, I will not represent that I am any further along. We have, basically, we have some leases that we could sign tomorrow if we get them approved and get, you know, to kick off the retail in the front. In the, in the back, the feedback that we've had is, is that we'll have to have a red light, and it'll have to be full access both ways across 61, and we'll have to show them what the ultimate cost will be. There's some rock further in the back of that project that makes it a little bit more challenging. But, you know, the thing that most retailers are fearful of, you know, most of the guys that we work with as a developer, that are gals, they look at it and say, you know, I've got to open a certain number of stores every year to hit my projections. And when you have a lot of, you have a drawn-out process like this one can be, it's challenging to make promises to them and maintain your credibility when you know that you're going to have a little ways to go. So what we feel like we're doing here is we're going to be able to develop the front, and we're going to be, we're going to be in a position then to have the back of the project set up to say, this is no longer speculative as to what could happen. If we get, you know, if we get TDOT signed off on the red light, then here's the parcel, here's what it looks like, here's where the road and access goes. So I think it's a major step in that direction. It's not a guarantee that it would happen, you know, in six months or six years. I still think there's some work to be done there. But there's definitely a lot of interest in Anderson County. So that's, that's my experience, at least. When we came out of the ground across the street, we immediately had more telephone calls saying, hey, I want to go in that center. Because a lot of retailers look at it and say, I want to make sure that you're going to build something before I commit because I might be foregoing another opportunity. And so when they see you coming out of the ground, we expect that to happen here as well, and we also expect that to be a little further along with the big box. So, so we're excited about it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jameson, thank you, Commissioner Isible. Commissioner Jameson.
Do we take these resolutions one at a time, or?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 1909773, the Glen Alpine project.
Yes, sir. We have a motion to approve Resolution 19, we got a second by Commissioner Mead, 19-09-773 for the Glen Alpine Economic Development Area. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Isible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's why I was hoping that we'd wait till we got to the end and listen to all the discussion before that we made a motion on accepting any of them. Because, you know, I, to really buy into this project, I think that we need to have a committee or operations committee. And we can approve this tonight, but I want to be able to go forward in saying that we're going to review the matrix. We're going forward, change, and maybe come up with an abatement program for the people that's already here. Some of these other things, if I feel confident that this body wants to do those things, then I'd be more supportive of it. But right now, you know, it's, I'm still iffy about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Isible. If I could, just real quickly, I mean, I lived at Doe Run once upon a time, so I understand the importance of having a red light at that intersection. It's very complex. That was many years ago before I moved from that area. Second, this weekend, I had the opportunity to go to Oak Ridge to make purchases that I would normally make in Knoxville because we didn't have those types of retail. And I told the folks in Dick's Sporting Goods how much I appreciated them being in Anderson County and the city of Oak Ridge, because I like spending my, I know Commissioner Isible's always been very supportive of spend local. I find myself now, before I go get gas, I'm going to buy it in Anderson County because I know it impacts this county. So one thing I want us all to know, commissioners, all of this has been in our packet. There's nothing being slid in tonight. We've had it in our packet. We can review this. This is a recommendation from the Industrial Development Board that's meant several times, if I'm not mistaken. The chamber's been involved. I'm not advocating we just swipe and say go, but, I mean, what's being presented is something we need to take action on. And I feel like we're sitting here re-deliberating what the functions of the Industrial Development Board did and perhaps what the chamber's done. And it's okay to ask specific questions on how it might impact us in a positive way or in a negative way, but we have, what, two or three more to go? And, you know, I'd just like for us to make some decisions. If we want to pass on it and give another 30 days, that's an option, or support it and we can move on. I think I heard you say, Mr. Bishop, that the taxes for that property are going to remain as is. I think what I saw while you were speaking is 24, roughly $24,000 is what, those taxes will continue to be paid. So there's no economic impact, you know, because it's still going to be paid. You're advocating using the monies that are hoped to be generated as tax or dollars to redevelop the curbs and the road, and that's what you're looking to do. So those funds are only going to happen if it redevelops, correct?
And one other statement of that, too. The plan that we have with the Industrial Development Board is we, for the debt service, we only get 92% of the incremental increase. So there is an 8% added. It's not 100% that goes to the, you know, to service the debt, so I did want to throw that out as well. So even there, there is some incremental increase as well.
Okay. So Commissioner Meredith, and I'll come back to you, Commissioner Jameson. Sorry for getting off there.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can move quickly. If I'm hearing every concern that I hear is, again, in my opening statement, if we need to readdress the policies and procedures of a TIF for this county, whatever municipality is, I think to Commissioner Isible's point, being chairman of operations, it's a simple deferral motion that the policies and procedures go back to operations and let operations form a committee, whether it's with citizens, the, whoever those players are, and we move on and listen to these three projects with that. I think that's what I'm hearing from Commissioner Isible. I mean, to me, if Commissioner Jameson withdraw his motion, I'll withdraw the second, and we just go ahead and refer the policies and procedures for the TIF policy of Anderson County to operations, if the maker of the motion would do that.
So not take action tonight?
No, no. I think what I'm hearing from Commissioner Isible is, if he's confident, and I hear confidence from other commissioners, that we're going to revisit the matrix after we get done with these three projects, that there's more confidence that we can redo that at a later date. But that's going to take, that may take a couple of months. It may take a couple of meetings to get it right. But, you know, we're here to listen to these three projects under our current matrix.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor right now.
That's correct, but it's up to the maker.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Jameson.
I think we need to vote on it tonight.
I agree.
I think, I think if we're going to put it off for two or three months, let's just put it off till next year or next summer or something of that nature.
I think Commissioner Meredith was speaking not on this specific, I think he was talking about to the rules and the policies and procedures as it relates to TIFs for in the future. He wasn't speaking to these that are being presented tonight at this time. That's my understanding.[1755.21] That was my understanding. And Commissioner Mead, I'll come to you in a minute if you don't mind. I, I think this could be summarized pretty quick. We have both mayors here. It might be beneficial to have, if the mayors are willing to come up and give their thoughts on what they see on this specific project. I'm not, I'm not asking you both to say you approve it tonight, but I'd certainly like to get an idea if you're in support of it. And I see the law director coming up, so maybe you're not allowed to give that, and we'll hear from him.
Welcome to your official comment if you got to say.
Yes, sir.
I heard the word abatement. That's not what they're asking for here. This is not a pill, this is not a pilot. They're not asking for a tax break. The tax base is preserved under tax increment financing. This is not related to abatement whatsoever. So, if anyone is confused on that, I'll be glad to entertain questions ad nauseam on that issue, but this is not an abatement in any way. This is not a pill. We're not looking at the pilot matrix in this, and it's a separate motion. If you do want to revisit the matrix on the TIF, that's fine. We can do that at any time. That's a separate motion. But please, if you, if you're confused on this issue, the difference between a TIF and a pilot, I'd be glad to help you there, but our tax base is preserved on a, on a TIF.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that. Commissioner Mead?
Well, I just think it's, it's important, I think there's still some confusion about TIFs, okay? TIFs are used to allow a way to finance the infrastructure changes that are required for a project. It doesn't help the person build their building, it doesn't, it doesn't pay for their parking lots, okay, all that stuff, but it does provide a way to, to finance, okay, the, the new roads, power structure, drainage can be a really big deal. Because you understand, as soon as you put it in a parking lot, everybody gets involved with the drainage or a building beyond a certain size. These guys all need, but this, these are big deals. Sewer, water, all this stuff has, it has to be taken care of when you put in, putting you, put in improvements on a piece of property. And that's what this financing does. And the only money that goes to that is money that's paid in by taxes by the project, okay, that's above what the taxes are, okay? And if for some reason the project defaults, the project owners are personally responsible to pay off the loan, not the county. So, it, so the county doesn't take on a financial responsibility. We get a new business in our district, and we have new employee, you know, more jobs in our district than people that pay taxes and live here. And then, long-term, after the, and the more the value of the property goes up, the assessment on that property goes up, the amount of taxes that are paid in goes up, and the TIF gets paid off even sooner. There's a lot of good things, okay? I'd like to see this be 10 years, but I think it'll be paid off in 10 years anyhow.
Yes, me too. Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Come on up, Mayor, Commissioner McCamey, sir. Come on up, Mayor.
I agree with what you said earlier. We've had this, you know, in, in our hands, and I just feel like we need to vote it up. And we've talked for about 45 minutes on this project before we ever got a motion. And we have a motion on the floor and a second. It's been due a second. I would suggest that we go ahead and vote.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. Mayor, and then I'll come to you, Commissioner Isbell.
Well, you asked, so.
Yes, please.
I just was responding to your request. These folks actually have developed in the county before, and before they looked at this project in the beginning, they did approach the city, they did approach the county about would this be a possibility because of the level of, basically, reconfiguration of an entire road in order to open up more area for retail. I think when you look at the numbers, the anticipated revenue, that's something as a commission. I mean, I know we're hearing that, oh, there's nothing to lose. Well, there is, there is something to lose if we don't accurately reflect or examine what the gain is because we are foregoing property taxes. And to some of the comments that have been made here by some of the Commissioners, you know, we are asking the taxpayers of Anderson County to fund escalating costs in government, but yet the property tax would be frozen. That's why it's, it's very critical that we look to see, are we generating a return somehow that is going to offset that freeze? And so, I know there's been a lot of debate, but that's a good thing. And to Commissioner Isbell's point, you know, I think we do need to set in place maybe a way to better examine these. I, my own personal opinion in looking at this one, this is, this is a good one. I'm not generally an advocate of TIF altogether because we get into all of these arguments, you know, it's good for this one, it's not good for that one, and I don't think that is really what was intended. But in this particular case, because of the level of work that's being done on the roadway, it's going to solve some other problems that has nothing to do with retail development. It's just going to have some added benefit. I think this is one that works. And I will say that I've been attending the IDB meetings. There is, Mark Mametoff did let us know that we do want to, I think, as a body, examine these numbers because once these TIFs are approved by this body, if there are extra dollars available, they can be used on bricks and mortar. At that point, it requires the comptroller's approval, but not this body's approval. So, that is an area where we do want to examine, we do want to make sure that we're looking at the best possible development costs that we are, and that's another reason why we might want to put in place a few more standards. But in my opinion, you asked my opinion on this one, I think this is one that is a return on investment for the county and the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Burton.
Scott Burton, Mayor of Clinton, 116 Masthead Drive in Clinton. Have to admit that I am pro-TIF. I think, you know, we have to be competitive. It's a competitive world, and we've made a lot of progress. There's a lot of buzz out there, not only for Clinton but for Anderson County. We've made some big development changes from our, from our building, being more builder-friendly. That's resulted in, I believe, over 230 homes in, in the county, in Clinton. And I think retail, you know, I've talked to several people that have built here, and they're real excited to reinvest here. Our evidence was, with Laxton, they've been a great partner for Clinton and Anderson County, and we need to continue that. I'm, I want to talk to you like I talk to my counsel, but I, I think, I think doing this is going to be another step forward, and I think if we don't do this, it's going to be a huge step backwards, and I truly believe that. But let me give you some numbers. I'm a numbers guy. If it doesn't make sense for my taxpayers, then I'm not going to approve it. But let me give you some numbers that Gil Cook, and for those that know Gil Cook, she knows your numbers, right, Jerry? So, I mean, these are, these are pretty, pretty good numbers. These are more city dollars that, but you can, you can really extrapolate that to county by probably multiplying it by three. It's about three times property tax, so. So, the property right now for the city of Clinton, that black, the, the Black Horse property is $4,931, what they're paying in property tax today. Now, the projected or the expected property tax, if this development moves forward, is going to be $31,407. So, of course, that $27,000 difference is going to go towards the TIF for 20 years. But the city sales tax that's projected, and we're, again, we're talking about projections, and this is, will be when it's fully built out, which will take a number of years, is $330,000 per year versus, versus $27,000 we're giving up. $330,000. So, even if it's 30% of that number, we're going to come out ahead. And it's just not what's, what I think, I forgot who said that very well, is I think, Mr. Mead, it's not, it's not necessarily what's being invested in that area. It's a spillover effect that's going to be in the whole city and in the county. So, guys, it's, it's going to be a win-win on this. And, and one thing we talked about, we worked closely with CUB from a development standpoint, and we can do it with the TIF, too. And I think Rick talked a little bit about that. You know, if he gets, you know, gets a little crazy and things are really popping, we, we can back off a little bit. We can, we can change what we're going to give TIFs for or what CUB is going to charge for a tax fee. And that's going to be our prerogative for, you know, for the city and the county and also CUB. So, I think, I think in the past, we've used to, we, we like that win-win because we've had win-wins. We have the, we have the property tax and we have the sales tax, but for right now, we're getting a big, big win with our sales tax, and we're going to get the other win down the road. So, if you haven't noticed yet, I'm, I'm very much supportive of this, and I hope you all come along with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Commissioner Isbell, on the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this motion is for the Glen Alpine, it's not the other two.
That is correct, sir.
It's just the one. And I just wanted to clarify, the talk, there's nothing being put off, is it's just that, you know, I would like to have some discussion and operations about redefining the matrix going, that would help our impoverished areas a little bit more like Rocket Top and Auburn Springs where you don't have to have such a major investment. I think Commissioner Meredith understands that, and, and we'll go forward with that, and I'm, I'm supportive of this Glen Alpine project.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. Commissioner Dennerberg, and then we'll go to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank Mr. Bishop for an excellent presentation. I've heard a lot of presentations of this type before in the past, and I want to say that you were very eloquent, you know your facts, and I think that what you have presented is going to be excellent for Anderson County, and I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennerberg. Okay, any other discussion? Let's go to the board. This is for the Glen Alpine, TIF only at this time. We have a motion, we have a second, we've had lots of discussion. Yes is for the TIF, no is against. We have 12 yes, three noes, motion passes. Commissioner Meredith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think for a lack of time, maybe we can expedite this pretty quick. I would like to make a motion, we approve Resolution 1909-775 and 1909-776.
Let you hit your button there.
And I saw move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith to.
Second.
If there are any specific questions on those two projects, we do have representatives from both, so I would, just to expedite time, if you have specific questions for those two projects, we can answer them now.
Thank you.
Just saving time.
Seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Commissioner White, sir.
Yes, Mr. Meredith, I would like to know, oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Meredith, I would like to know in the project up here, the Hicks project. I would like to know specifically what businesses are going in there and what kind of taxes, sales tax, that revenue that we could expect.
Well, Ms. Kristi Hicks is here to represent her project, so I will allow her to answer that question.
Hi, I'm Kristi Hicks. I'm one of the partners of SW Clinton Partnership. Tim George and I have partnered with two guys out of Nashville that are retail developers. We are proposing a 10,400 square-foot retail. Much like Andy and Josh, we are probably both chasing the same tenants right now as we speak. I've been trying to elbow Andy and have him give me a couple, but we have two letter of intents from national retailers. I'm not at liberty to say because Andy's probably trying to bug me of who he is, but we're, we're chasing retailers that are going to be good for our community.
Ms. Kristi, I guess my concern is retailers that generate sales tax is what I think is important.
It is.
And I, there's retailers that's in business that don't generate sales tax.
Right.
And that is my concern.
We're, we're generating national tenants that will create sales tax.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Thank you, Kristi. Any other questions on these two proposals? Two TIFs as presented. Did you have one?
One do not.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other questions, let's go to the board and vote. Again, this is for both TIFs. This is 19-09-775 and 19-09-776. One is for the STNL Development Area, the second being SW Clinton Partnerships. Yes is for, no is against. Motion passes 11 to 4. Thank you, Commissioners. Great discussion. I apologize if we went a little long-winded, but I think it's important that all of you have your questions answered and, you know, thank you, Commissioner Meredith. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, Commissioners. We didn't hear from Dave, how it's, he's for Tractor Supply. If you have any questions for him, he's going to start his development, development real soon as well, so I just wanted to welcome him. He drove all the way from Nashville, so.
Commissioner Meredith, I would thank you for coming, sir, and I, I've not been on commission for 30 years, but I've been on for a few years, and I don't believe I've ever seen this many folks come into this chamber in support of business in Clinton and Anderson County, and I want to thank you. I, I know it's a lot of questions. It's only because all of us represent the people in our district, and we want to be sure we're doing the right thing, but we appreciate the opportunity. We look forward to having you here and growing the county together and the city together. Thank you. Thank you. Would you all like to take a break?
I would like a motion to go ahead and refer the matrix to the Operations Committee.
Have a motion by Commissioner McCamey. Forward the matrix to the Operations Committee. We have a second by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. Would you all like to take a quick break?
Yes, please.
Okay. Five-minute re, let's get, 10 minutes, sorry, let's get back in here at 8:15, parliamentarian says. He carries a big whip.
Yeah, not in my that clock.
Oh, yes, sir. Your cell phone clock.
You know, I'm going to get a chair and fix that coffee.
No, you're right. We got to do it.
I'm here. 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 I'm here.[1653.53]
I mean, we've got the gas.
We need to use.
Oh, I thought maybe it's too early.
We can do this.
Tell her thank you.
Who needs water, anybody?
All right, Barry, getting low. Good things living here. I got one, thank you. Exactly.
You know all too well, don't you?
My little box has seemed to recover because when they first gave this to me, they said, we don't know what's wrong with it, but it's hot as hell. And it, I mean, it was almost hot to touch, not just a little warm, but almost hot. And now it's just barely warm on the outside. So maybe it's miraculously recovered. Boy, I love electronics that just miraculously recover.
I thought. It's new.
And I want you to know, Barry, that I think you're worth every bit of cost to that.
What time are we meeting? We can meet at sixteen.
All right. Everybody's back in order. Let's go. We've got one year left. All right, we said eight fifteen. It is eight sixteen. We're going to rock and roll here. We'll casually wait on our fellow Commissioners. I have a parliamentarian. Still, after all this time.
I would note that we have a clock.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to get back to business here. We left off. We got six A done, all the resolutions. We are now on to committee reports. Purchasing report. Did you have something, Catherine, or is that leftover?
Leftover.
Thank you. Again, purchasing report by Catherine Ashmary, Deputy Purchasing Agent. Catherine.
Mr. Chairman, we're on page thirteen.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott.
You're welcome.
Keeper of the page.
That's a long way from one oh three. Page thirteen?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Go ahead, Catherine.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, we didn't have any contracts on the agenda at the time. I made this approved by the Law Director, so go down to Section B, Contracts pending Law Director approval. Under this, Contracts Three and Four have now been approved by the Law Directors, just to provide an update. So I don't know if you all want to vote as a group or individually.
It's a pleasure of commission. We have a motion, Commissioner Creasy, or no?
I must be hitting Miss Pat accidentally or something.
I'm going to. It's all right.
Then I'm going to second your.
So one through four, the Law Director has approved.
No, just three and four.
Three and four.
Hang on. You're saying three and four has already been done? But you need us through. Are you asking for all four, though?
If you all want to vote on all four.
I mean, you're presenting all four, right?
Yes, yes. Frank's Painting Services for the Board Education and PDS Web Development for our website development. Okay, thanks, Trey.
Okay, so all four. Okay. All right, so we have.
The first two have not actually been approved, right? So they still would be subject to the Law Director approval.
Yeah, Law Director just said to be over in the morning, but yes, you're correct. Okay. We have a motion. Commissioner Scott. All four?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve all four as presented, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? Should we go to the board or voice vote? Okay with you?
Voice usually works.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Next, under Other Business, Section C. At the Purchasing Committee, Bear provided us an update on the auction of two oh five South Main. I know you all have it also on your agenda under Old Business, the main agenda, so I don't know if you want him to give an update now for any discussion.
Yeah, now's fine. I'm okay with that. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Please do.
Excuse me. Last Tuesday afternoon, I met with Ray Huffaker, who is the business, basically the business manager, runs things for the dealerships of Rusty Wallace, and also Mark Trout, who is the general manager of the store here in Clinton. We went over and went through the building, and they, Mr. Huffaker said he would get back with me by last. I told him, I said, I would like to know something by Friday, which was last Friday, because a week ago tomorrow is when I went over there on Tuesday afternoon. But anyway, they made, I went by this afternoon because I tried to call Mr. Huffaker this morning early, and he has yet to call me back. But I went up to the dealership and talked to Mark Trout, and he, the bid that they placed was three hundred thousand dollars when they went out on a sealed bid. The only bid that was received was from them. Excuse me. But anyway, Mark Trout said that they would increase their bid from three hundred thousand to three hundred and ten thousand. I said, okay. I said, is that the max? They said, yes. And then I called Sean Byers, who was the successful bidder the day we had the auction on August the eighth. And he was in Nashville, and he made a comment to me about five o'clock. He said, Bear, he said, if the county approves it, he said, I will go through with the purchase. And that's what he told me about five o'clock this afternoon. And that's the only, that's my update.
Thank you, Bear. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Were you able to talk to anyone at Rusty Wallace about how they're currently using the two oh five main property for unloading and for vehicle storage and that sort of thing? Has that been discussed, the agreement?
I did not go into detail pertaining to that. I did make the statement to Mark. When I met with him this afternoon, I said, you do know you have some cars parked over on this, on the county's property, don't you? He said, we got some, he said, yes, we got some used cars over there, but we can move those. I said, you might have to. That's, and that's all I said.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner McCamey, you have a motion, sir?
Yes, I make a motion to go ahead and accept the high bid of three hundred and fifty-two thousand and get rid of that albatross.
So your motion is to accept the original bid?
Yeah, the three hundred and fifty-two thousand. That was the high bid at the auction.
Seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Creasy.
I can't go along with that. We, if we sell that, then we're letting the citizens of this county down. That, we have failed them. If we keep it, we have a chance to recover that loss. We have a chance to put that property to use. It, that's Main Street property. It's a large parcel on Main Street, and I can't go along with it. I think that the citizens of this county needs to boost our confidence that we're looking after them and keep that property to make it profitable for them. It's their property, and we will take a loss if we sell it. And that's their loss. If we keep it, we can put it to county use. There's, that building, in my opinion, can be, the mold can be taken care of. We can do minor repairs to it to make it useful. That front portion looks pretty good shape to me. I stopped by there this afternoon on the way to commission meeting. I left a little early in order to do that. Looked pretty good in there. The lights were on in one portion of the building. I could see some around the corner and some of the rooms. But we can, it was being rented before we bought it. We can rent that. That space is actually larger than the senior center we're now renting for the seniors. It's a good space. I don't know if there's any mold in that newer space or not, but that could easily be checked. It's not that expensive to have it checked, have some people to put some Petri dishes in there and check it. Several people in the county can do that. I don't, I'm not ready to cave in and admit defeat on this. I think that we can bring it back to life, and we can serve the people of this county and make them very proud that we did the right thing here. We've already maybe paid too much, but I think we can resurrect our era. And I'm going to vote against selling the property.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the last couple of years, I have to admit I went back and forth on this issue. Every now and then it still comes up with constituents when I'm out. Kind of going along with Commissioner Creasy's comments, and he answered some of the questions I was wanting to ask as a general question, trying to keep it short. Mr. Chairman, your comments earlier were well taken, and I know this is another issue that we've talked about numerous times.
Commissioner Vow.
I don't want to take a loss on the building either. I really don't. I understand Commissioner Creasy's point. I really do. But to those who would prefer to keep the building, I guess my question would be, for what purpose? What do we do with it? Do we put the money into repair? Because I believe we've had previous meetings where we've discussed that, and that did not sound like a prudent option. Putting other departments into the building for some kind of temporary use. I think we've tried that one around the Mulberry Bush on that a couple of times. That didn't work out. It wasn't feasible for those. So if we do wind up keeping the building, my question is, what purpose could we use for it? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vow. Commissioner Waddell.
Well, I wasn't here when this body bought the building, but I'm here now. And it's just as much my responsibility as it is the people who were here then and now. We voted to let Bear sell the building, and I was sitting in here, and Bear stood right there and said, I think I can get three hundred and fifty out of it. And he said it's going to cost up to five thousand to sell it. And we voted to sell the building. We got three fifty-two out of it. That was, that was reasonable at the time. I think we've had a three hundred thousand dollar sealed bid on it. Now we've got three fifty-two. That's the value of the building. It doesn't matter what we paid for it. The value's the value. We can keep it, and we can put thousands and thousands of dollars into it to fix it, or we can cut our losses. I believe that we should cut our losses because it is unknown how much money it's going to take to fix it. If it was fixable, then why have we wasted all this time going back and forth on it? If it was fixable, we should have fixed it and let the seniors use it. But we've not. We need it back on the tax roll. Everybody keeps saying it's Main Street and Clinton. Main Street's not that big of a deal anymore. Charles Severs is a big deal. Market Street. Yeah, Market Street's a big deal. But we're faced with, it's a hard decision, and I don't want to take a three hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss, plus all the interest, but what I want to make sure before I vote to sell it, I want to make sure we take that money and pay on our debt. I don't want to sell the building, take the money, and put into something else, and then end up with a six hundred thousand dollar debt and no building, and another mistake. So I don't know where I'd get that answer, what we're going to do with the money. Does anybody have any ideas? Is everybody for paying off the, paying off the loan, or what are we going to do?
Right now, the motion is just to sell the building and accept the bid. Correct. We can certainly address those funds if the motion passes.
Thanks, sir.
Good comments. Thank you. Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like quite a few of the other Commissioners on this panel, this has been an extremely painful decision to have to make. I remember distinctly sitting in the audience when this came for a vote, and I remember questions I had at that time without any answers. Taking a two hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar hit on this building is just extremely nauseating. But then you have to look at how much money would we have to put into it to bring it up to standards for occupancy. And I'm thinking that we would probably end up with another million-dollar piece of property sitting over there and really no end in sight, because we all know when you start working on old property, you just don't know what you're going to get into, and it's always three and four times what you had expected the cost to be. All I can say is I'll make up my mind when I push the button. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you very much. When this property was proposed to us to look to purchase, it was, it was a really nice piece of property. There was, you know, we can do this, we can do that. Look what it's going to do for the seniors. Look what it's going to do for the county, and it was built up. I'm not jumping on that horse again. Six hundred thousand dollars is what we put out there. And now it's being brought back to accept three hundred and fifty-two. I've gone both ways on what should we do.